All the district two committee regular meeting to order. Can I get roll call please? Why we miss Lisa? Here, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Camworth here.
Yeah.
Liz. Ms. Sterns?
Here.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Here.
Ms. Russell? Here, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, moving on to item two for motion approval. Can I get a motion to approve the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Camworth. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth, aye. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
The same.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve this September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole and closed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Camworth, aye. Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Moving on to public hearing.
Should be the presentation first, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members. This year, I thought I would do something a little bit different than my usual presentation. Wanted to take this time as an opportunity to present a goal that has an impact on the budget, but it's something that we'll be working on throughout the year. We're piloting a classroom innovation project this year. Where we gathered input from and information from teachers on projects that they think would have a significant impact on their classrooms and on their students. So we had a few main goals for this project, but mainly we wanted to focus on enhancing classroom and learning experiences for students. We had the opportunity to really impact students' day-to-day lives with this project. So improving the educational environment and making classrooms more engaging were some of the top priorities. We also wanted to offer teachers the opportunity to bring some creativity and innovation to their classrooms as well. So some project specifics. Each project submission was limited to twenty-five thousand dollars in expenses and needed to be instructional in nature. We were not focusing on athletics or activities or building projects. This was strictly to impact classroom instruction. That being said, no major construction could be done, meaning we're not going to be doing any electric work, plumbing, knocking down walls, putting them up, things of that nature. And the other important piece was that this could only be a one-time expense. There could be no annual or recurring costs that came along with the project. So in April, we sent out surveys to all the teachers and staff members asking for their project details. We asked them to provide us with all the specifics that they could so that we could determine feasibility, cost, et cetera. In May, we collected all of the responses, organized them into categories, so that in June, we could form a committee and decide which projects would be approved. We asked one teacher from each building to be on the committee. And then at our meeting, we sat down and went line by line through each submission. We assessed each project based on feasibility, timelines, cost and effectiveness. We discussed potential challenges that might occur with each project and decided which ones were going to be the most beneficial to students. In July, we put together our initial approval plans. We began meeting with the buildings, teachers, and started finalizing which projects we were going to be moving forward with. We have already placed a lot of the orders and made a lot of the purchases for the projects, but we are looking at a serious backlog and delay in receiving some of these projects. So I anticipate that it will take us at least through the first semester, maybe even throughout the rest of the year to really get every single purchase done, delivered, installed, and completed. We were able to approve sixty-three of the eighty-six projects that were submitted, with a few additional projects that were tentatively approved, but we're still waiting on some outside input and guidance prior to completion. We got some really creative projects, but they mostly fell into two categories, furniture and technology. I took over the furniture side of it. Dr. Boswell took over the technology. And then we kind of just worked with our committee to determine which projects were going to go, which ones we could finish first and knock out right away. Dr. Boswell, myself, the committee, we did our best to make sure that as many projects as possible were approved. We really wanted to make sure that all of the factors included in the project for each submission were taken into consideration. And like I said, we really wanted to do as many of these as possible. So we were able to purchase a significant amount of classroom and student space furniture. Many of the submissions were for flexible seating, including these yoga balls, which the kids love. Feeding back chairs, tables and chairs that you could configure into different designs that would enhance classroom experiences. We also purchased several items for our student spaces such as the social workers office, counselors office, freshman academy, et cetera. Here are some purchases that were made for Delta. We purchased some exercise bikes that were put in some of the classrooms and offices, which allowed students to get some movement in while still completing work on their laptop. And right there in the middle is Karma. She told me she was made for the camera, so I promised I would put her picture in our presentation. But there she is posing with these, I've been calling them lava lamps, but they're actually like sensory light-up water things. I don't really know the exact term for it. But I went over to Delta last week and they were obsessed with them. They're all over the place. The kids love them, so it's exciting to see. The other major category was classroom technology. We received several requests for portable charging stations so that if students don't have their iPads charged, they can come into class, grab one, get their iPad charged and not miss out on any classroom exercises. We purchased several Apple TVs, screen projectors, boards. We purchased a drone for Oak Forest High School. And Dr. Williams mentioned the world language translator headphones. We purchased a couple of those through this project as well. This is a photo taken from a drone that was purchased for Oak Forest High School. This is their opening day. The video is pretty cool, just awesome quality, really cool to see what they're doing with it. And the goal of purchasing this was to be able to showcase different courses and different aspects of the school. We can also use it for instructional labs, projects, marketing, just promotional footage, things like that. This is a rendering of the Hillcrest College and Career Center that we'll be working on this semester. This will include all new shelving units, tables, workstations, and flexible seating options. This is one of the biggest spaces that we'll be working on with this project. And we're really excited about it. They had a lot of really great ideas for what they're going to do with that space. So definitely have an impact for students. So as I mentioned earlier, we're still working on finalizing all of the purchases. These are just estimates of what the overall total cost of the innovation project will be. Some buildings were more focused on technology, while others had more furniture requests. I'm estimating the meeting this project to cost about four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. But we've gotten some really good feedback from students and staffs on the project. So this is something I would personally like to continue moving forward in the years to come. Obviously, it has a significant impact on the budget though. So we will be analyzing and assessing each year, trying to decide how much we're going to allocate to the projects and how many we're going to complete, et cetera. So before I move on, does anyone have any questions on the classroom innovation?
The drone, who was flying or whatever? Was it a kid?
I believe it was Mike Bonifaz. They said he is, I guess. Matter of opinion. Any other questions? Okay, so just to touch on a couple other budget highlights. I promise I won't put anyone to sleep tonight, so just want to mention our evidence-based funding. We are still a tier-one assignment. Our percent of adequacy this year is seventy percent. Last year, we were at sixty-six percent. Our adequacy target again is eighty-six percent. So we are inching our way up to that eighty-six percent. Ultimately, it's a good thing, but it is important to note that we will move tiers once we hit that spot. So these significant jumps that we've been seeing in the past couple of years are not going to continue once we hit tier two. So I just think that's important to remember. And then I provided a breakdown of how the evidence-based funding dollars will be allocated. We're looking at forty-point-four million spread across ed, O and M, debt service, transportation, and capital projects this year. I wanted to talk about our fine and performing arts budgets this year. We're doing something a little bit different. Jenny Reed, our supervisor, has put together a four-year cycle for replacing all of the old and broken instruments at each building. This year, we're allocating ninety-five thousand dollars for this first year. We also have set aside ten thousand dollars per building for all of our fall plays and spring musicals. This covers everything from production rights, costumes, props, sets, et cetera. And then we've allocated fifteen thousand for maintenance. This is mostly for the stage and just making sure that we have all of our equipment up to date. But we really want these students to be successful in these programs. So definitely allocating money to these specific items is really important.
Is that fifteen thousand overall or purple then?
Overall. So our capital projects, the majority of what our capital project funds will be spent on will be the summer of twenty-two. Obviously, that was our Bremen and Hillcrest parking lot and tennis courts. We renovated the Oak Forest nurses' student services offices and the nurses. We also are going to be completing our eighty-eight bleacher renovations this fall after football season is over. So Tinley and Oak Forest are done. Bremen and Hillcrest will be finished this fall. We've also done some other outdoor space renovations. The Tinley Park path to their softball field, we've completed. Put in a concrete path so that it's, people don't have to sink down into the ground to make it all the way out there. So these are just some of the major ones, but as of right now for our capital project plan, we will finish paying for all of these and kind of do our annual assessment and see where we're at for next summer and the summer after, usually done at the end of the fall. The other thing I wanted to touch on is transportation. A couple of months ago, you approved our Illinois school bus and Alpha School Bus contract, where we discussed the fifteen percent increase for each of these rates. We have two-point-five million dollars budgeted for special education transportation and four-point-nine budgeted for regular education transportation. The goal is to get kids here on time and without any significant issues. So we have been using additional vendors to kind of supplement and solve some of these transportation issues. Obviously, the kids need to be here. So this is just something that I think is going to have to happen until we can kind of come up with a better solution and we start to see some of our issues that we're having decrease with Illinois and Alpha School Bus. However, we will be using the, some evidence-based funding dollars to cover the deficit that would naturally occur in Fund Forty. So I am anticipating to have a balanced budget at the end of the year with our transportation fund. Okay, so here's the takeaway. The district is in a sound financial state. However, if we wish to remain in that sound financial state, fiscal responsibility does need to remain a top priority. There are a couple of unknowns that could affect the finances of the district. As I mentioned, supply chain issues. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to approve the rejection of our paper bid. That's something that we've, I don't believe, ever done because it's never been an issue to get paper. So these are just things that are going to affect, things are expensive. And there's just no other way around that. I'm sure you've seen that in your personal lives as well. We are looking at a potential property tax delay. Co-County has said they're aiming for before December thirty-first, but that it will probably be sometime in January when we actually receive our fall installment of property taxes. I believe that we have enough in our fund balances to cover paying all of our bills and have a sound financial plan for maintaining positive cash flows. But this is something that they think is going to be solved by January, but at this point, I'm not sure how much faith I have in it. The other piece I want to mention is inflation and CPI. This year, we are at a five percent CPI and we have not seen a CPI higher than three-point-eight since two thousand eight. And I think that's really important to remember as we move forward. So these are just some of the conclusions that I thought I would point out. There's a lot of moving factors, especially when you're looking at all the issues that really we have no control over. So we're in a good spot. I feel comfortable. I just want to make everybody aware that these are some things that could come up throughout the year. And now seems like the right time to do it. Does anyone have any questions?
What percentage are taxed to the band? Usually around sixty, is that about right?
What percentage of what are they paying?
Of the cost to run the district.
Usually around forty-eight percent, but with evidence-based funding, they're paying significantly less.
So we're paying significantly less? Because it used to be about sixty-seven percent, then it went down, are we forty-eight?
We have seen significant drops because we are making up so much more revenue with our evidence-based funding. The goal is to get it to eighty-six percent funded by the state. So, and we're at seventy now. Any other questions, Ms. Morrison? So at this time, Ms. Russell, I would ask that you please open the floor to receive public comments on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and our fund balance reserves, which is estimated to be approximately sixty-six million, five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars at the start of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
Can I get a motion to open the floor to receive public comments on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and fund balance reserves?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Roll call please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth, aye. Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Are there any public comments for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget or fund balance reserves? There are no comments. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Can I get roll call please? Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth, aye. Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
It's our public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments? All right, moving on to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Just a few highlights. The good news is when you're working in such a great district, it's hard to sometimes choose, but I got a couple that I think are really important for all the board members to hear. One is here right at Oak Forest High School. The Chicago Urban League has reached out to try to expand their services, to have a new services department, and have you report that Mr. Connor and his admin team are working closely with them. They've been in the building this week and continue this partnership. They're providing a lot for our students. They're going into classrooms and study halls. They not only work with community events, but they're also trying to work for workplace opportunities, and they do some social-emotional learning as well. So kind of a nice partnership to begin. Glad to hear that Chicago Urban League is interested in the suburbs and wanting to expand some of their services. So I'm just looking forward to them having future partnership. And thank you, Mr. Connor, for getting it started. Also just left here from Oak Forest High School, where they are having their annual Cure for Childhood Cancer fundraiser. It's a great event that started at Oak Forest. We had a student athlete, Pablo Forrest, who's now a coach as well, that experienced that situation and had had a leg amputation. Oak Forest has continued on the tradition to try and raise awareness, support fundraising efforts to kick childhood cancer. So just wanted to alert the board that there's a lot of good community service, community events going on in addition to all the foreign language communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our principal reports.
We got this nominee to go first, so good evening. From Oak Forest High School, we are celebrating Homecoming Week. So my outfit received a few comments when I came in. I'm just pointing out that it was country versus country club and I aired on the side of country. So that's the, the term. So that is tonight, having a great homecoming week. We'll wrap that up with a parade through the community then on Friday afternoon and then the pep rally to follow with the football game after the dance on Saturday. So just having a great week there. As Dr. Sephora mentioned, that fundraiser was tonight with the Help Kick Childhood Cancer. They had, they had raffles, they had baskets. Just really nice to see the community come out and support cause near dear to, to our hearts. We also had tennis going on at the same time and some swimming and diving happening at the same time. So it was quite a bit happening, but I'm hearing that Lightning might have curtailed some of those activities. So that's what's going on at Oak Forest High School. And I will turn it over to Timmy.
Hello, hello. We have the Titans. We, on the opposite side, just wrapped up Homecoming Week. That's probably why I have a nice smile on my face. It's always very exciting, it's always very busy, but it's also very nice when it's over and done with. This weekend, also in Tinley Park, was the annual Oktoberfest and our band was highlighted on Sunday at a one P M. performance with an outstanding crowd and they did it all very proud. But I'd like to segue into something that we're trying new this year and I'll make sure that Tiffany sends an invite. You know, our, our team tries to find unique ways to engage our families into our school process just so we can build those relationships. And actually, through my work with the chamber, I was connected with a wonderful woman who's an author. She's a speaker, she's a trainer, she's a coach. And she has offered her services to Tinley Park High School and to District Two Twenty-Eight. She does what she calls transformation tables. Basically, it's inspiring conversation between teenagers and their parents that's more than just, can you pick up the wet towels off the floor? Did you lock the door? Did you turn the lights off? You know, what did you buy from the grocery store? Did you get your homework done? Things like that. But definitely having, creating some more dialogue, get more quality conversations between parents and teenagers. So we're calling it Dinner and Conversation. If we can't obviously be in their homes when they're having dinner to help inspire that conversation, we are basically setting the dinner tables at Tinley Park High School. They'll have dinner first with their parents and then Christina Jackson will take them through these, these transformation tables. And there's three different values. We're doing this for three weeks with one value being highlighted each week. So on the twenty-eighth of September, the first value is the value of hope and how we all look at hope as a teenager and hope as an adult, as a parent. And just to kind of have conversation that's a little bit different, more valueistic than it is about kind of day-to-day life. Have no idea how it's going to go, but we hope that our parents and teenagers have a, have a nice, kind of a different experience at the high school. And if those three work, there's three more to follow afterwards. So the twenty-eighth, Tinley Park High School, I have a local restaurant that's donating all the food and that will have a transformation tables afterwards. So September twenty-eighth, five-thirty is dinner, six o'clock starts the conversation. You're all welcome. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to follow the Titans who, Ms. Nolan or Dr. Nolan is smiling because Homecoming Week is over and we know the Bengals are in the midst of it. We have Homecoming next week. So we are very excited to welcome you all to Bremen High School. If you're interested in joining us for some of our festivities. Today, we passed out freshman class T-shirts. So it's that first piece of Bremen High School that every one of our freshmen received. Home of the Braves down there, they wear it with pride. We'll get to see them as part of their participation in spirit weeks. They have Class Color Day, their shirts match, and they earn arrows by participating in different things like Country Day and what have you over at Bremen. Our kids are excited, looking forward to that next week. We have our student Homecoming Court. We also have our student council run a faculty royalty. So we have teachers that compete to raise money for our junior class who hosts prom. So we have some teachers that get engaged and the kids really think that's a lot of fun as a fundraiser that goes towards our prom. We have our pep assembly on Friday afternoon, followed by our parade at three-fifteen. Mrs. Taylor is going to be reaching out to you guys to see if you'd like to participate. We would love to have you guys. We're hoping to kick off right around three-thirty. If we're taking any bus pickup issues, we'll be lining up in our bus lane. But kicking off, leaving Bremen High School and then returning to Bremen, we found that that change in the route has helped a lot of our students be able to actually get involved. So that'll be a quick parade route. We have the game Friday night. We know we've got a few big reunions, class of sixty-two, class of eighty-two. We're expecting a lot of people out on Friday night for the game. We'll have a special spot in the end zone for all of our alumni to celebrate with us. And then the dance on Saturday. So we would love for you guys to join us. Mrs. Taylor will be reaching out with more details. Thanks.
I will add a quick shout-out. Bremen High School, this was pretty neat to get their kids involved. They had a barbecue for all the activities and clubs and sports. They lined the new pathway leading to the field house and had all the teachers, sponsors, coaches. And it was just really neat. Mr. Meany and Mr. Blackwell, the new assistant principal with the burgers. And then it led right into the JV football game. So it's a pretty neat way to highlight all the programs. Again, just trying to capture kids getting involved, so that was really well done.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We had a really unique experience last Tuesday. I wasn't able to be here for that, but Mrs. Turk, our science department supervisor, put together a monarch butterfly release. So since I wasn't here, she put together some stuff for me to read here. So Nature Conservatory, Indian Boundary Prairies and Salt Creek Butterfly Farm hosted a monarch tagging and release event here last week. The event was first of its kind in our district and involves students from our new science elective, environmental investigations. Students from Ms. Kizior's Tinley Park High School class and Mrs. Cardinal's Hillcrest class attended and participated in the event, which also included senior citizens from the community. Everyone present learned about the work of these groups and their efforts to stabilize the monarch population and why this matters. Participants tagged over fifty monarch butterflies, recorded relevant data, and released them on their migration to Mexico where their new, unique serial number will be tracked. Many of our district administration members were also there, Dr. Sephora, Dr. Williams, Dr. Nolan, Mr. Forty, all released some butterflies from what I understand as well. And Mrs. Turk is going to continue to work with these organizations to have these types of unique experiences for our students moving forward. Homecoming, yeah, we, we have it going on right now. If you saw our hallways as you walked in, we had movie night planned out on softball field tonight and Lightning caused us to be inside. So we have a couple hundred kids in the gym right now enjoying a movie. So we were able to adapt and kind of move into a different location. We've got a few different things planned throughout the week with our assembly on Friday and then obviously the game and then the dance on Saturday. Today, we actually hosted our first of the year Career and Conversations Day. So during third period, students were able to sign up with our career counselor and that was based on the medical field. And then fourth period was on entrepreneurship and business. And so we had six people in those fields come and sort of had a Q and A with our students. And actually, five of the six that presented today are Hillcrest talks. They were graduates. So they came back and kind of paid it forward and worked with our kids today. One other, or two other things of note. Malik Lindsay, I don't know if you all remember when Mr. Lynch, the TV production stuff back in the spring, I believe we were over at Bremen for that. Malik Lindsay was one of the presenters, really outgoing young man. He was recently featured on CBS Two News. Chicago Football Classic is typically HBCUs that come up and play football at Soldier Field and then they have a Battle of the Bands and things like that. Because of COVID, they weren't able to have the games and the Battle of the Bands, but they still had the scholarships. Malik was one of twelve Chicagoland area students who received a five-thousand-dollar scholarships. The best part of it was, what that five-thousand dollars did was basically exile any cost he had from college remaining. So he's going to college for free this year. So that, that was pretty exciting things that we heard. Last thing is on October twenty-second, yeah, Saturday, October twenty-second, we're hosting our second Hawk Five K Run Walk. It'll be for, to raise some money for some senior scholarships and also to contribute to the Curtain Foundation, which also gives scholarships to all four of our districts. to the Curtain Foundation, which also gives scholarships to all four of our district schools. So there's a little bit of information. Next is our presentation. We're going to be presenting on the Freshman Academy. They're going to be talking a little bit about the successes that they had last year and then sort of what our plans on to work and and make things better for this year and moving forward. So we have Colin Milton, Associate Principal, Amy Deforti, Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Kara Trezenberg, our freshman social worker, and Mr. Eric Johnson, our freshman counselor.
Good evening, everyone. So like Mr. Tyler said, we about a year ago, yeah, a year ago, we started a freshman academy. So we want to report out this evening, share how it's gone, what what this program looks like and the results that that we're seeing. So first off, why why did we start the freshman academy? So this is a screen grab from ISB State Report Card. And one of the metrics that they report out on is the percent of your freshmen that are on track. So once the freshmen complete their first year of high school, they have a formula, which I'll talk about in a minute, and it 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 basically looks at all the classes they took and determines if they're on track to graduate in four years. So you can see kind of where Hillcrest has been kind of hovering in low to mid 60s, 2020, we had a little bit better here, 2021, we took a dive, definitely affected by the pandemic that year. So looking at the numbers, we said we really need something specifically, a program that targets our our freshman students. So to explain a little bit about what this the metric is, it is looking at whether the students coming off freshman year, did they pass at least five classes? They cannot have one, they cannot have more than one failing grade in a in a core area. So nothing, English, math, science, social studies. So it's possible if they were to get past five classes but took, you know, one semester where they failed in a core area, they could still be on track, but not to. Now, the University of Chicago has done a lot of done a lot of research on this and they'll tell you that if a freshman comes off their first year and they are on track, that puts them four times as likely to graduate when it comes to finishing up senior year. All right. Here's a pop quiz. Dr. Williams, you're not allowed to answer this one. This is an actual freshman student from Hillcrest that we had last year. So would this, I don't know if you can see, but the grades are not great, but mostly passing grades. Student earned five and a half credits. Would this be an on track or off track student? Yeah, go ahead.
Off track.
Why would they be off track? I mean, they got five and a half credits, that's more than.
Four.
Okay, yeah, fortunately, this student did not pass either semester of their physics, so that puts them off track. So they were.
Does the one count for the year or a semester?
So they, since they failed both semesters of science, they're off track. Had they only failed one and they then passed the other, they would have been on track. They got over, they got the five credits. But yeah, so if they have two semesters in a core area, now it could have been one semester of science, one semester of English. In this case, it was it was both semesters of science that that knocked them off track. So we 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 have three levels that we use. Mr. Johnson, he'll talk here in a minute about some of the academic counseling that he does with our freshmen. But I mean, technically for the state, students like this are off track. We have kind of a middle category, which we call emerging, which means simply that they're close to being on track, but just a little bit shy. All right. So here are our supports that we have in place for our freshmen. So we have a freshman learning center. We we have a success team, we're putting an asterisk by, we're calling it the Grade Nine Learning Focus Team that we have this year. We have a dedicated freshman counselor, dean, social worker and administrators. The freshman academy, that includes our teachers who teach predominantly freshman classes. And we also have, so we have the teachers, we have the administrators, dean, social worker, counselor, all lined up to support freshmen. This is a look at our freshman learning center. This top picture, that was from earlier today, that's Ms. Trezenberg on the right and she was doing some work with the students, some social emotional programming. Ms. Neal is our facilitator in there, she does a really good job. But freshman learning center, I think we have them at at all of our schools. And this is where students come in either before lunch or the half period after lunch. We have academic support in there, so they can get tutoring in math, English, science. We we started using what we call a PMD, Progress Monitoring Data Report. This is a little snapshot of what what it looks like. So they have a square for each student and also serves as their seating chart. And they run this about twice a week. It basically gives them an update on what the students are doing grade wise in class. And we also see an attendance, which is tied to the specific classes, so we can kind of see if if the attendance is is causing an issue in terms of the grades. All right. So we also have enrichment program and a lot of that happens on Tuesdays, a little bit on Fridays. So Mr. Johnson is the dedicated counselor for for our freshmen. He does a lot of college career counseling, social emotional support. Ms. Trezenberg, she's dedicated freshman social worker. Ms. Matthews is our freshman dean, she works with the students on behavior. New this year, we have the Free Lunch Academy, they're doing some character development for the month of August in there. And then also new this year, we have our media specialist, which are doing some tech tutorials with with students. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So as Mr. Bill said, my name is Eric Johnson, year 11 here at Hillcrest, year, I guess, three of the freshman academy approach. And it kind of all started back during that original pandemic year. So when we were all remote, we were part of training that went through the University of Chicago, our National Freshman Success Institute. So they did a lot of research, a lot of practice, a lot of a lot of data supporting kind of that freshman academy approach and how things should be treated differently for our kiddos. So as we kind of went through those trainings, it really kind of changed our scope. It allowed us to find teachers that were very well versed and equipped to kind of meet the challenge of of working directly with freshman students. So a big piece of what what I would do in in terms of our freshman programming down in our our freshman learning centers and in other places in the building, I was able to really utilize the expansion of the Navia's curriculum that you guys approved the purchase of. I think, Dr. Secora, you had him approved, okay. He told you about that, I hope, right? So we expanded that that access and that resource, which really allowed us to kind of get more out in front of our kids. So a lot of us, and through the training, a lot of the focus when you when you look at freshman students was about trying to help them start to cement their their sense of their own identity, how they see themselves in the world, how they see themselves interacting with the world. And also really focuses on helping to develop their sense of agency, right? Their their belief that they have control over the world around themselves. So those are two major, major issues, or I should say issues, but two major events that occur at that freshman age. They're really starting to find themselves and they're really starting to understand their agency, how they can interact and control that world. So with that kind of focus, a lot of the lessons that we're able to utilize through the Navia's curriculum really focuses a lot on things like their personality, their interests, their skills and their values and really try to try to help lead them towards some sort of a future that is going to provide meaning and purpose. And we all know that if we can get kids starting to think forward in terms of their careers and ideals and their paths and really understand who they are as people, the motivation of coming to class and and doing a little extra becomes a whole lot easier. So a big focus was 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 through that, utilizing Navia's curriculum. And those are some of the lessons on the cute little picture at the bottom left. All the different types of lessons, like today we were doing topics about my foundations, where they kind of really get to know themselves, start to explore their interests and then start to make a connection to groups. So that's that's kind of the the continual goal for for my role in terms of that type of program. I do want to give a little shout out to the deans, they're not they're not on the slide, but they did presentate, like Bruno Glover did presentations last year on things like goal setting, kind of knowing your triggers. Dean Matthews has taken a step further this year, she's adding things like the seven habits of highly effective teens. So she'll be delivering lessons in the FLC that way as well. So it's a lot of material that we're getting out in front of our kids, trying to build them up as as high as we possibly can.
So I'm Ms. Tej, I'm the freshman social worker. So this is my sixth year at Hillcrest. Before, last year, I was the social worker in charge of all specialized kids. And I've always loved working at Hillcrest, but I didn't know how much I would love working with freshmen. I sincerely loved working with all freshmen, even though they are, they're by far most mediaist and frustrating and immature kids. They are also just so endearing and there's just something like, it's so easy to build relationships with them. And I think a lot of what we're doing is the collaboration that Dean Matthews, Mr. Johnson and I have, like we are talking about all of our freshmen all the time. So we are all getting to know all our freshmen and I think that's something that's really special. So yeah, I I thank you for the opportunity for just having the freshman academy. What I do with the kids on Tuesdays, when I go into the FLC, I work with them on emotional intelligence. So I'm pulling stuff from the Ruler Method, from Mark Brackett, and use a mood meter with them a lot. So just getting them to recognize their emotions and themselves and others, how to effectively manage their emotions, because a lot of times they do not know, a lot of times their emotions manage them. We are pushing also into the labs for the kids who don't have FLC. Another cool thing we did is last year I got approved a mindful room right next to the FLC. So kids, if they're getting Cs or better, they can sign up to go in there and kind of have like some just relaxation time. This has got a lot of nice like lighting and furniture, so if they're doing what they need to do, it's kind of like a time where they can just relax. Last year, we used that space as well for some workshops, like we did workshops at the end on healthy relationships, anger management, goal setting, time management. Kids were able to sign up, right? So there were like specific workshops that we allowed them to kind of, they were interested and they could sign up and they could come down, like a small little group study. Yeah, so that's kind of what I do in my day to day. We do a lot of class, like class push-ins, FLC push-ins and just available to the kids as they get.
One thing we did at the end of last year, we kind of did a generic survey to our kids and we kind of asked them, and we as adults, we always think what we do is great, you know, we think we know what we're doing, what we're saying. So we kind of want to get a little bit, a little bit of feedback from the kids. So they're the measure of our success. So we kind of asked them some very general questions, specific about some of the lessons that were being presented to our kids. So some generic numbers for you, right? So roughly 70, 75% of our kids felt that they were able to identify their emotions and feelings using that mood meter that you saw on Ms. Tej's screen. They were able to recognize and understand their own emotions. They were able to manage and regulate their own emotions. They were able to identify emotions in others. You know, so you have a a pretty significant amount of kids that are reporting that they they are improving in those areas through that programming. Eighty-five percent of the kids roughly felt that they could understand how to connect their interests and their values to their future career options. Again, providing that little hope. They reported 78%, 78% so that they could identify career interests in place to their personal interests and disagree with that one because we had over 90% of our freshman class complete that actual activity. So they did a little bit and they even thought they did. And so on and so forth, right? Managing their time in school, working on homework, all those sort of things, there was there was pretty significant. And we asked a very general question, yes or no? Were these lessons helpful to you? And 90.1% of the kids said yes, they were. So to us, that was a nice little validation of what we were doing with the kids. We got some pretty pretty good feedback directly from them and it kind of allows us to kind of build on kind of what we thought was a really great approach, kind of based on that that experience and that training that we kind of went through that that pandemic year, that remote year. Boswell? What did you do this time? I got, that's a perfect time for a story. Sorry. Same yet.
So the last question we asked on the survey, and this is kind of the stuff I love, it's like the ooey gooey social work stuff.
It's a technical term.
Right, very technical. Because you know, teenagers don't lie, like hardly ever, they're very blunt, like they're very, very blunt. We got, sometimes we have to work on that. But the last question was what did they think was the most helpful of like the freshman academy as a whole? Like not just the presentations, but like the dean, social, like all of it and the teachers as well, because they all had the same group of teachers. And so these are some of the quotes I picked from, there's a lot of them, but I just tried to pick a good assortment. So things like, the most helpful part is them encouraging us to keep doing our work, the tutors and the counselors, also getting to talk to the teachers one on one, helping manage my emotions, express myself, the adults around. When they had seniors come and tell us about their experience with the school, the mindful room, because it's very relaxing. Because I think when, at the end of the day, like when we look back at high school, like we don't think about, most of us, I don't think, think about like that algebra test. Like most of us think about like the relationships, maybe some of us do. I don't know. I think about my algebra teacher, Mr. Morrow, too. So I think this is the stuff that kind of sticks with our kids sometimes more than like the tests and and the homework assignment. So that's important, too.
All right. So if it isn't clear, we're really passionate and we love our freshmen. We're really proud of the freshman academy and the success that we've experienced. This year, we've made a couple of enhancements or upgrades, if you will, just to continue that success and try to meet the needs of all of our students. So first off, our teachers this year in the freshman academy are teaching in teams. We have three different teams, Team Navy, Columbia and White, which consists of one math, one English and one science teacher. And basically, they share students. So this is beneficial for a variety of reasons, but the biggest reason is that it allows them to collaborate and communicate about their students and how to meet their needs best. Second, the teachers asked for a classroom management plan that covers that covers the same roles in all classes. So here it is on the right, they have three roles. This allows for consistency from room to room. The kids know exactly what to expect when they walk in on a daily basis. And Jess, we got our T-shirts back in August.
I think it was August 8th or 9th.
Sorry. But we continue with summer enrichment this year, but we learned last year that it was a really hard transition for our kids with the pandemic, going from junior high to high school. So this year, we really focused on building relationships and getting our kids in the building and getting them familiar with the building so that they were excited to come here and they had some familiar faces that they knew. So they spent two days going on scavenger hunts, working with the NHS students to find, you know, where everything was in the building. They had a presentation that they learned some character building. They got to work with our counselors and our social workers in peace circles and just a variety of things. We also got them set up on their on their iPads, we got their lunch IDs. So they were really just prepared so that transition, that first day was a lot easier. We followed it up with a parent university where we invited our freshman parents in that night and our entire administrative team was there. They got to talk to the nurse if they wanted, the IMC ladies if they wanted to. Everyone was there to answer all their questions. You can go on a building tour just so that they felt comfortable and confident to send their students here as well. On the first day of the freshman transfer day, we had the students had a presentation from the Free Lunch Academy where they started the conflict resolution and character building, which they continued. They they saw a skit, they're going to be putting on their own skit September 30th. They've been doing that in FLC on Fridays. They attended an athletic and activity fair where they got to really see what we had to offer so that we can get them involved. And followed it up with a drone picture there that Dr. Boswell took on the football field to Google. And our last upgrade, which we're all really proud of, the four of us and Dean Matthews, is that we've started time, Friday's 9:15 uninterrupted hour, where the five of us get together and we talk about all things freshman, from celebrating our successes to how can we recognize students, to where are they struggling, looking at attendance, behavior, all of it, just so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students.
All right. So how did we do? Dr. Boswell? All right. So we we hit 85% this past year, so a lot of hard work, a lot of passion, we're very proud of that. And, you know, we're we're excited for this year and we're hoping to build on that number. So thank you, Dr. Secora and Board of Ed for for being so supportive of what we do here at Hillcrest.
Can I just get one thing real quick?
So, thank you, Dr. Segura and Board of Ed, for, for being so supportive of what we do here at Hillcrest.
Can I just add one thing real quick? The data and everything that you saw on those slides are very important, obviously. The most important thing that I've seen in when you see what's going on with our freshmen is that our kids, our freshmen know they have people advocating for them in the building. They, I couldn't tell you how many times I need to see Dean Matthews, I need to see Ms. Teague. They, they know that they have people in this building that care for them. And I think that's probably the most important thing out of all of that, so, just add that to that.
Thank you, Hillcrest, for sticking around tonight and presenting to the board. Your hard work is noticed, it's appreciated, so keep up the great work. It's fantastic.
Absolutely, thank you for that presentation. Were there any other, did we get all our principles? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think we got it. I will, I will get you an update next month on Delta versus Chrome, as he's here, but.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, moving on to our FOIA request.
Ms. Ressler, since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act request. Mary Hernandez, Senior Executive Director for SIU Edwardville, requested a list of Bremen Community High School District to create teachers, their names and email addresses. This request has been completed. Joanna Janik, the Village of Tinley Park staff accountant, requested enrollment information for those schools within Tinley Park and those outside of Tinley Park. The number of enrolled students at the end of the 2022 school year, the number of students currently enrolled in the 2023 school year, and the total number of people that are currently employed at your schools within Tinley Park. This request has been completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any court member reports?
Yes, just read the paper. I noticed that forty-eight Cook County schools out of, out of the sex ed curriculum. Governor also signed into law, I believe, that's twenty percent equals a D. Am I wrong on that?
That I'm not aware of, most certainly. I, I haven't looked into it, but no, that I'm not aware of.
Twenty percent.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I'm actually not done yet. Trying to get my thoughts together here. Why isn't that one African-American a part of this team?
Part of what team?
The team that just presented.
Ms. Matthews is here.
Ms. Matthews is the dean, part of that team.
She, we have multiple events around at the same time today, so Ms. Matthews is here, but she was also supervising the movie night.
We, um.
Did I answer your question, Mark?
Yeah. When Alexander came, Mr. Alexander was now, um, Dr. Alexander. He was having his school on track. And it's nice that it's up to eighty-five percent. The school was already going in that direction. It just had to step back a little bit because there was who's in charge and who's not.
Mark, it's not nice, it's amazing, the work that this team has done. So, and I'm not going to take that away from the willing to do that.
And I also understand that it was moving in that direction already. And to me, it's, it's still another aspect of the base.
You shouldn't be, you should be really proud of it.
The school was moving in that direction already.
Absolutely.
And they never had a real chance to come out there. You hear about that he's doing great things, taking everything that he learned here and moving to each other. And now they're going out. I think we need to look around, that Hillcrest had African-American as the principal for thirty years. Thirty years. Football program here is now in a decline, in fact, the whole district. I know y'all say Bremen won three games, but the teams that they played have not won a game. They're opponents. We are supposed to look out for the best interest of the district. That's what we made a promise to and swear to.
That's what we've been doing, Mark. I think unfortunately, a lot of your comments are factless, factsless and baseless. And so, there's been a lot of great work done here, been a lot of great work done here.
Yeah, we had great work going on before.
And that's continuing. And I applaud the staff and the administrators and the teachers for all of what they continue to do each year. Thank you very much, Mark, for your comments. Moving on to new business, item six point one, Ms. Morrison.
Item six point one is our bills, addendum bills, payroll, and CBS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickham, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Item six point two is the fiscal year 2023 District 228 Budget. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Item six point three is the fiscal year 2023 District 228 Budget Resolution. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Camworth, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Item six point four is the fiscal year 2023 Salary and Compensation Reports for TRF and IMRF employees. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Camworth, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Item six point five is the Fall Paper Fed Rejection or Paper 101 and Tazza Supplies. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickham, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler? Alright, item six point six, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Ms. Ressler. Six point six are the overnight field trip requests presented at community hall. These are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Camworth, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
And item six point seven is the course name change for Intro Web Coding to Computer Science II. This is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Item seven, personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins.
Under retirement, Corinne Williams, under medical leave. Sarah Bogart, Alicia Bootrin, and Allison Jevins. Under resignation, Julius Brettberry, Amy Locati, Rafat Imand, Rachel Montez Curly, Michael Smith, and Brianna Young. Under employment, Nanny Boyer, Christopher Arnold, William Galati, Taylor Johnson, Sincere Brown, Tim Luke, Monica Shidi, Roberta Jones, Rhonda Craco, Joseph Valenti, Barbara Lunsford, Elizabeth Stern, Oregon Hefling, Eden Robalado, Kelly Deal, Cindy Walton, Kylie Soderlund, Valerie Verduzo, Charles Thomas, Kyle Newman, Calvin Sykes, Colleen Macho, Keva Urban, Emily Umic, Lauren Schmidt, Lissy Rivera, Danielle Ligons, Patricia Angulo, and Jacob Lugo. And under change of position, Kristen Hulley, Arizh Abade, Kathleen Zilman, and Jackie Gomez. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Camworth, any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.
Congratulations, our new employees. Going on to closed session, can I get a motion to approve, uh, to go to closed session to consider information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILC 120, section 2C1, and collective negotiating matters, five ILCS, section 120, 2C2.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Camworth, roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Camworth?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Ms. Ressler?
Aye.